This time I'd like to call to order the council work session at 6:30 on February the 13th. Shannon, we need a roll call for a work session?
Yes.
Okay, Shannon, would you call a roll please?
Mr. Fury?
Here.
Mr. Post?
Here.
Mr. Bellin?
Here.
Mr. Bonacci?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Present.
Mrs. Labby?
Here.
Mr. Barr?
Here.
Also in attendance, we have the mayor, the law director, Matt Vazana, and our finance director. First thing on the agenda I'd like to bring up is council rules. It's in the box and it's section 111. And there were some things that we've discussed with the law director as well as the clerk that had been brought up. So, I've got notes and I'm just going to address them as we look at the document that's in the box and it's open for discussion. The first thing that I would like to just propose, and again, these are all proposals, these aren't duns, looking for feedback and to see if we, you know, if there's consensus that these are ideas that the rest of council would like to do. So, on the first page, Rule 11101, it says, "Regular council meetings shall be held the second and four Tuesdays of each month," and at the end it says, "Such meetings shall commence promptly at 7:30." Now, in the past, we've had the question of how can we, why do we have to wait if we have an early caucus meeting that's disended? And remedy to that would be, I would recommend that we change the beginning of the council meeting to be at 7:00 PM and then add the caucus as an item under the council meeting. This gives us the ability to have executive sessions throughout after 7:00 for either, we don't have to wait till we go into the 7:30 meeting. It also gives us the ability to, the meeting started, we don't have to rush to be at 7:30 and jam things in. If we take five minutes longer, it's okay because the meeting started at 7:00. You're going to get it all. So, what are your thoughts on moving the council meeting to start at 7:00 and having the caucus as part of the agenda?
I like that idea. I like, I have no problem with moving it to 7:00. I guess my question would be, if we're going to do that, what is the purpose of having the caucus as a item? What purpose is it serving?
So, in my, okay. The purpose it would serve is it would still give you an opportunity to go over every item on the agenda, give you an opportunity to have discussions on any miscellaneous topics that you wanted or any topics that are added to that caucus or any presentations that are reasonable or available or that are needed. For instance, you know, we're talking this evening with Rebecca and, you know, when I was talking this afternoon, do you want to be in the caucus or the meeting? You know, it really wouldn't matter after that.
Yeah.
There still could be multiple public participations, so there could be a single one because it's one meeting. I think it allows us some flexibility on how we do things to be a little bit more efficient on some of those nights where we're slow. And it gives us the flexibility to cover the agenda items with questions more thoroughly than being rushed to be at 7:30. And those are my opinions.
Sure. I guess I would, I don't disagree with any of that. I guess I would argue that if we're going to have a discussion for each piece of legislation as part of the regular council meeting, I don't know that we need it as part of the caucus meeting or the caucus item as well.
Okay.
All right.
I have a comment also. My other thought is when we have awards and presentations, that it's nice that all the people coming for the awards and presentations, they can come at 7:30 versus having to all sit through a caucus meeting. You know, we're going to have sometimes a room filled with people having to sit here for 30, 40 minutes just to wait to get to their thing. So, that's my other concern for having one meeting as well. So unless you wanted to, you know, word it that it'll start five minutes after the caucus meeting, no sooner than 7:20, I'm just, you know, I'm just thinking out loud.
Let me give a fix to that. So, say we're going to start the council meeting and we have awards and presentations as everybody's here. Then I start the council meeting with the, I start the council meeting with prayer invocation, I take the roll, we approve the minutes, and then we go right to presentation, or presentations. That way, they're not going to get any faster at 7:00 than they would at 7:30.
I think that is a glorious solution to that.
Okay. Anybody else? Mayor?
I have no comments. Thanks.
Okay. Chuck?
I had, I had one resident ask me about this. And specifically it had to do with when would audience participation be? And there are some folks that it's not practical to be here until 7:30 and they felt that if we were pushing it earlier, it was maybe an attempt to exclude folks.
Yeah. It's an evening meeting. Absolutely. We had 19,000 people. We're not going to schedule a meeting for one person. You know, we, in fact, we have had nobody attend a meeting in three months. So, I think we're fine with the, with the meetings, with that. So, and that would be my answer.
Except for Jonah.
Jonah's here.
I apologize. Yes.
Jonah?
Welcome though, buddy. Good to see you again.
It's kind of like Mr. Irrelevance.
He meant nobody has commented in three months.
I would take it as a, as a thing.
Jonah.
I was, I was more focused on the island, so.
I'm just relaying what somebody asked me about. Okay. And then, and then the other part was the difference between their participation at caucus being more of a discussion and then if that discussion would be eliminated if we only had one time period for residents.
What do you think we should do?
Well, personally, I think we should be as engaging as we could be. There are some municipalities that have different structures than ours. And I think anything that allows us to have feedback and to be aware of maybe the barriers to come into that podium, and they might be things that we don't see because we get to sit here. But it could be intimidating for some folks, it could be risk of public speaking, or there could be some reason that folks are reluctant to come. And I think that.
So having be, so the people that are.
There could be a number of reasons.
So the people that are reluctant to come, okay, today, the people that are reluctant to come can come at a caucus meeting and speak, and then come to a council meeting and speak, whether it's 7:00 or 7:30. I'm not saying that we could, would go, we don't have, we're not too, whether we're going to have two or one, or how we're going to work that. So, I'm simply working on, you want to combine the meetings, start them on time, and run them through.
All right, so to tackle Mr. Bonacci's sentiment, so see what you're going with that.
I'm just trying to.
Are we still allowing the residents two opportunities to speak? Is there a caucus portion where there is a remonstrance period with it back and forth?
Mr. Barr, I'm just not running this very efficiently because to tell you, I just want to get through, first, I want to get.
All right. We don't even.
I want to get through 11101.
I think I have some.
We're going to get to public relations, like in three pages.
That's the natural spawning of this conversation.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I just.
That was my thought too, in my head.
The thought is right now we have two opportunities for the public.
Right. And if we want to keep those the same way they are, we just keep them the same way we are.
Okay.
And that's fine. But that's going to be in three pages.
So first blush, I guess, I don't have an issue with it.
Okay.
I mean, without, we work the details out later.
No, no, I'm, again, so regarding starting the meeting at 7:00 and combining them, is anybody absolutely opposed to that? And, you know, again, if you are, it's okay.
Just tell us. History why there were two meetings, maybe that would be helpful.
It's, it's pretty much been, Mayor?
It used to be on two different nights.
It could be on two different nights.
Meeting on the first, second, and fourth, and the caucus or committee of the hall was on the first and third. And then we combined those to the same night, okay, to make that prior to the council meeting. And the name was done, changed to caucus meeting, which it really had the same function. So that's not a big deal, it's got the same function. But it was a work session just for council to be able to get together. And back in that day, you didn't have all the television and everything else, and people didn't come to those meetings. So, council, and truthfully, it started out in the jury room. We would meet back there. And it wasn't a closed meeting, but it was back there. And then, you know, we would, we'd be sit around a table and be able to discuss legislation in a discussion format. So then people started saying, well, you know, you're hiding from us, why don't you do it on the floor? So we moved it out here. And correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, I mean, you were there, we moved them out here. And, and then, you know, so we had them on the floor and the, the public could come to these meetings as well. But it was still the same meeting, it was just informational meeting for council in case anybody had a question about any of the legislation that was on the agenda before we went out to, on a regular floor to go ahead and vote.
As I recall, I think we always had a committee, we called it a committee of the whole, but there were usually one before every meeting just to catch up. And sometimes we had so much stuff that we needed an extra Tuesday to spend three hours to go through it. Another challenge when we did this 20 years ago is, you didn't look this stuff up on your laptop or your iPad. The police officer came to your house and gave you about three inches of paper and it took a lot of time to go through, I mean, because, so part of that was.
Types of juntos.
Types, yeah. So it, it made sense to.
A candle.
To sit down and go. Okay. Mayor, I appreciate your history.
Thank you for sure.
I think I agree with Greg that one of the concerns is, are we going to do it twice? If we're going to do all that twice, do you, do you really need separate meetings? Do you need one meeting? Why not just keep it separate?
Well, you could always just have the first meeting be, we have this piece of agenda, are there any questions, instead of reading it and going through it. You know, just, again, I'm not trying to rewrite everything, I'm just looking for a way that we don't sit here for 20 minutes saying that we can't start a meeting because we're not at 7:30.
I don't know.
And that's happened many times.
Well, why don't you just have the regular council meeting start at 7:15 or at the conclusion of the caucus meeting?
I think it's clear to start it at 7:00 because you still need time.
You have to, you have to.
You have to announce the.
A specific time we need a public, need a public time.
Oh, but then it has to start right then?
Then it's got to start at 7:15.
Okay.
Sure. Sir, we're on the work session, so we're going to have a committee of the whole, so you're free to sign up and then we'll, we'll let you.
Yeah, that's fine.
No, you can sign up now, but we'll address you in about 20 minutes.
Yeah.
All right.
Yes, sir. Okay. I have, I, I would also like to talk about, the next thing I had down here was a.
For Patreon?
Switch, I'm going to go to 11105.
Got it.
And that is the boards and commissions. And I'm, so take there, and to get there though, I have Mr. Vazana looking at 1104 regarding disposal of subject matter. He had some ideas he wanted to do. He's going to give us some information on that in the future, unless you want to briefly go over it now, or Mr. Vazana.
Well, I, I just want to rewind for a second. One of the things, and you might have heard me over here kind of making noise while this stuff.
I wasn't.
The caucus, like the history, I'm familiar with the rough history of the committee of the whole of the caucus, from the more casual meetings to the more formal where we sit up here. And, but I will tell you that the caucus isn't in the code. The caucus is effectively a work session that has evolved over time where you can casually dispose of the subject matter. The code and your regular meetings do provide an opportunity for the public to comment. So kind of keep that in mind that you have a lot of flexibility over.
But if we put the caucus in, but if we put the caucus in as part of the agenda, it would become part of council rules.
That's correct.
And it would become.
It would essentially, at least how I, so as Mr. Fury pointed out, he and I went over a lot of this, so I had an opportunity to, I haven't fine tuned any suggestions, I'm going to wait till we had the conversation tonight. But if you move what we refer to as the caucus into the council meeting, you're essentially creating an opportunity for the members to have more of a casual conversation about the pending legislation within the regular council meeting. Whereas right now, the caucus exists as like a pre-workshop, non-regular council meeting. So, I know that distinction might be like, ah, that's trivial or who cares? But that brings me up to, you know, where Mr. Fury brought up 04 here in 111, but 02, to do that, you know, what we were just talking about, would require us to change the agenda or regular council meeting.
Understood that. Absolutely.
But as it refers to 04, if I may also add in, Mr. Fury, we talked about 11 with the motions, you know, the disposal of subject matter, looking at all the.
And that's what I thought you were going to do, is hook that in together, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Why don't you give a brief overview of what dispose of.
So, well.
Disposal of, say it again, Mr. Vazana.
The disposal of subject matter is within section four. I mean, that's kind of foreign on this section because we don't really operate on a committee base. So, our committee, and we might have in the past had a finance committee that maybe only had three members on it, or, you know, some smaller subdivision.
Finance committees only ever had three members.
So, oh yeah, well, see where I'm going. So, the idea though about the disposal of subject matter to the committee, when you're not holding, you know, how do I say this? We operate primarily as committee of the whole. You know, we, we have these small, uh, uh, subject matter committees, but what I have found in smaller cities, we don't need to have a codified committee referral process because we, we already submit the financial matters to the finance committee, which meets right before the regular council meets. So I don't, I don't know, that might be.
So you want to eliminate 1104?
Ah, what I would like to do is create one section that deals with the disposal of the subject matter before the council, generally speaking.
Okay.
So where we tie in section 11, where we have all these limiting motions.
Yeah.
And just reference, you know, proper rules, which is the standard document for disposing of business before a deliberative body like a council. I like to kind of streamline it and make it less codified so we have more tools at our disposal to handle the subject matter that comes before it.
So if we eliminate 04 and put it in 10, at some point, could you give us draft to look at that?
For sure. Yeah, that's my intent. All of the stuff that I'm talking about right now, I'm taking copious notes here with the comments you're making, and I'm going to put all that together and we'll see if I can get inside the head of all seven of you collectively and produce something that.
Good luck.
We can, we can start from.
Okay.
Thanks, Matt.
All right. So, again, we're only going to do a piece of this tonight, and I would like just to get through page 23, which is 1105 to 1109. 1105 are the council representatives and the committees that we assign people to. I, I think I've talked to most about taking some of these out. And I'm, and I'll tell you, we cannot touch the volunteer firemen's dependent because that's a state requirement, although I don't think that there's very many volunteer firemen still around. This had to do with paying part-time firemen before we had a full-time fire department. So, that's off the table. Charter review oversight committee was brought to us 10 or 12 years ago as an, I believe Mrs. Gadoch and Mr. Sorese put this together. And it was, I think it was at a time where we were trying to appease people that were following the charter if there was an issue. You could, you know, address it with this committee. I don't think anything ever came from this. If somebody thinks that we're doing something in, you know, against the charter, tell us. We'll fix it, we'll tell you if we're right or wrong, we'll correct it. You know, it's, I just think it's, I don't think it's worthwhile, and I'm not sure the last time I've met. So I would recommend that we eliminate the charter review oversight committee. I'd also recommend that we eliminate from this list the community relations board. We have an ordinance that we, regardless if we leave it on this or not, we should bring back and repeal or amend because the way that this board was set up by an ordinance with, with the mayor and Mr. Sorese, it was set up to have three elected officials, two or three elected officials from the city, meet with the elected officials from the township at the time we were having some challenges, as well as, as the village now, city of Reminderville. That has morphed into, you know, a 8:00 or an 8:00 AM meeting at Kent State with, where everybody pretty much tells you what's going to be on their, in their night, what they did in the last 60 days, what to do in the 30 days. It's all available in the, on the websites. And in the, and the last time we had a meeting, I was unable to attend and Daisy was also unable to attend. So, we had, the mayor sent Jen from the parking wrecks department, and then Shannon went on our behalf. And it's about an hour meeting. And Shannon's perfect for that because, in my opinion, because she knows everything that's going on in the city, and she can bring it back and actually give us the notes. So as long as we're hitting the minutes and stuff, I'm not expecting council people to take time off work to go to this meeting, nor do I expect how it's more because it's basically the secretary from the township, council person, Mr. Walhopp, and he's retired, he can do whatever he wants, with Kent State's in it, the library's in it. And I just don't think that it's, there, other than update our calendar events, there really hasn't been any activity on that. And the last one I had was Twins Days. Mrs. Labby is currently the Twins Day representative, but when we were having a Twins Day person, you know, Gary Sorese again recommended that we have this meeting where he wanted to go, and so he made part of this group. The relationship with Twins Days, in my opinion, and I wish the mayor wasn't here, but there was a time when there was a lot of just back and forth at a lower level. But really, now there's a contract in place. You know, when I first got here, we were spending $80,000, $90,000 to support Twins Days. Firemen didn't, firemen and police didn't, you know, it was like overtime for a week. Everybody stayed there, service guys weren't allowed to take vacation. We did, you know, and then we said, why are we funding this organization with city funds that's a private entity, even if it's tax exempt? So that got weaned out as we were having trouble with Chrysler things and, and we, now we have a contract and they work it out with the service director, right? Twins Days talks to you, they talk to the police and fire, I talk to the mayor. I'm not sure, I haven't had an action of council on Twins Days since the mayor and I voted to give them $10,000 for a laser show, which was a bad decision. And that was with Andy Miller Sr., in my opinion. So, again, I know Mrs. Labby enjoys it, but I think that she said that nobody's been there since there, Sorese, so. And those are the three recommendations I'm making, so I'm going to open that up for our conversation.
Is that three or four?
It's three. It's Twins Days, charter review, and community relations. And again.
Not the volunteer fire.
Can't do it, it's a state board.
Oh, I thought you.
I mentioned it, it's a state board.
And, and the Glenn Eagles Advisory Board is going away.
It's gone, it's already, well, excuse me.
It's on that list.
I apologize. The Glenn, we have already done legislation to remove the Glenn Eagles Advisory Board, so that's a given, that's already done. That will just get corrected with whatever version we come out from there. There you.
I have a clarification question.
Sure.
I didn't, I don't think I asked this. I'm not, we're being very.
Sure.
So, 11105 are the reps to these board, these various boards and commissions?
Yes.
A lot of that conversation that the council just had, specifically as it relates to charter review oversight, community relations, Twins Day, do you want to also at some point or through this process look at repealing those, you know, the other sections in the code? Because this section is just about the council liaison.
Right.
Does that make sense? So like community relations board, for example, is a creature of.
And I have a note here, we've talked about that. There's, there's, there's an ordinance that we're not following because it's, because nobody else adopted it 12 years ago, 13 years ago. So we should repeal it or amend it. If we, if we keep it, we got to fix it.
Yeah, correct.
Okay. I don't know that there is any legislation to add Twins Days or the charter review. I'm not sure that there's, I don't think, I'm not sure that there's.
Well, I know there's one for the community relations board, for example.
I, I only know that there's one.
Yeah. So, do you want to repeal the board itself? Or do you want to just, like, right now we're talking about liaisons to the existing board?
Again, we have an ordinance that is outdated and not being followed with, because the other people that are supposed to be in that don't go there either. So, you know.
I think he's saying yes.
So you can have, you can have the meeting, we don't need an ordinance for every meeting somebody goes to.
No, but it sounds like the community relations board is not something that we need to carry any longer on codified ordinances.
I'm fine with canceling that because it's already set up, it doesn't matter. And that gives us flexibility to, to address it however we need, in my opinion.
Got it.
Bill?
Yes, ma'am.
I attended the community relations because I know we were going to get rid of it just to see if it was worth a council person going there, and it truly isn't. Because the other people in the community, they were, they had very little to say and, you know, who's over it, Mary, you know, she did what she had to do. But, but I don't think that the city of Twinsburg should be involved in the community relations.
Okay. Thank you. Matt, you were looking into minute, oops. Chuck?
Mr. Fury, trying to articulate this. I have concerns about the optics associated with removing a community, community relations board. I would like some assurance that somebody in the city would alert us to the workings of our neighboring partner.
The clerk's going.
Okay. So.
And the mayor might send somebody as well. It's a meeting lasts four times a year, and it's, and we put it together and nobody else, and it got morphed into a morning meeting and not a 6:00 Wednesday night meeting.
Respectfully understand that.
Okay.
I'm just concerned that if we were to vote upon this, the look of, we don't want to be.
Well, intestinal fortitude is part of the job description that councilmen need.
Sure.
So if you want to vote against it, that's all.
I'm just sharing concerns. That's it.
I'm just saying, I have.
And then similarly, when, with the, would we have the ability, should something come up with the charter that would need review, would we have the ability to establish an ad hoc review? Or would we limit ourselves away from it?
We had something that came up with a charter, we could do it in a committee of the whole, we could do it if it was something challenging with the law director and the executive session. This, this board's never done, nothing has ever come there.
Yeah, there's a process.
If there's a challenge to our charter that they think that we've broken, often we find out when they send us legal papers and it's, you know.
And you could create a temporary committee to study the issue as well, so if someone came up to the podium and said, I think you need to look at this, you could as a council create a temporary.
Okay. As long as we have the flexibility to, to create.
And then you have the power, as Mr. Fury said, to oppose charter changes to the electorate.
Yes, you need five people to vote, an affirmative to put something on, I think it's, yeah, it's five, you need five votes to put it on the charter, or onto the ballot. Council may recommend at any point a charter change with five votes. It's, that's in the charter, I think it's under powers, section 7. But, and the only thing we've done by council is put a mayor primary in that's been voted on three times and passed. No other change that, I can recall, mayor might have, might, might have a different recollection, but I don't remember any other charter changes that the council's put out. Remember any? Okay.
No.
Okay. All right.
I got it. And, and that's all I have for this page because 08 and 09 were things that the law director was going to look at, and that's a good place for us to stop.
And one more thing before we stop.
Sure.
And maybe this is for the law director, and understanding that this might not, it might not be the right spot, but what measures do we have to hold the appointees of our boards and commissions accountable for attendance and participation? Is that, would that be something that could be included in this section or would that go so?
When it's in this section, I think that you incorporate that into the discussion. I, I think that you incorporate that into the discussion of boards and, because each boards that we have, you could put a section in that covers all boards, but if you want to put an attendance policy in for the, the, the non-charter boards, Park and Rec, Environmental, Jedi, Park and Rec, Environmental, I think are the three. Am I missing one? Let me look at the list.
I think a lot of course. I, I, I do think I can, while you're looking at that, I think I can answer your questions.
Thank you.
What, first off, you've kind of given like a teaser for the next.
Coming.
TV show.
Yeah.
But so this would be the clip they play as a commercial break.
Prequel.
Yeah, like that is a piece that Ms. Collins and I are looking into right now. But I will tell you, generally speaking, the rule is, you know, the power of points carries the power to move. And we generally have, you know, miss fees and spout fees and sometimes we'll see attendance